Welcome to the Goodyear City Council Meeting. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. The agendas and the speaker request cards are located on the tables outside of council chambers. You must fill out a speaker card in order to address the City Council. Please hand in your completed card to the city clerk before the start of the meeting. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to any city staff. You may also check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to still voice your opinion on an item on the record without having to Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and state your name for the record. We ask that you speak clearly into the microphone. You'll have a maximum of three minutes, and there is a timer visible from the podium. When the light changes from green to yellow, your time is coming to an end. When the light turns red, your time is up. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council meetings stream live on Facebook and YouTube and online at Goodyearaz.gov. Thank you for your participation in tonight's meeting.
I'd like to call to order the regular meeting on April 22, 2019. Please join council membership in the pledge allegiance and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Almighty God, pour out your Holy Spirit on your faithful people. Keep us steadfast in your grace and truth. Protect and deliver us in times of temptation. Defend us against all enemies and grant to our city your saving peace. Keep watch over the men and women serving our community, especially the injured firefighters from the Peoria Fire Department from this past weekend. Please be with our state and our nation. Be with all of them in all that they do. Amen.
Thank you, council membership, for that invocation. Everyone is present, so we're just going to move on to the communication items. So we'll start with 4.1. The Goodyear Fire Department will recognize the Australia Mountain Ranch community for earning distinguished Firewise designation. Our fire chief, Paul Louizzi, and emergency manager Julius Sermopolo, 2%. Did I get close to that?
Yes.
I think that's a Greek name, right? Well, I'm first-generation Greek in the United States, so...
Paganis.
Yeah, Paganis. I should have said the other one, but we'll just stay with the Paganis. I couldn't remember what the right response was.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Julie and I tonight are going to present this award. But essentially, what we're doing tonight is formally recognizing the Australia Mountain Community Ranch neighborhood, which more specifically is really the northwest section of Australia Mountain Ranch, and present them with the Firewise community designation. This actually came about because of council member Laura Tano brought that concern to us and wanted us to come up with a plan for this. So this is really a culmination of that work. And tonight, what I'd like to do is introduce who is in the audience from the board tonight. So Barbara Erdl, Larry Horn, Fred Solta, Brooke Cunnefer, Frank Young, and Anna Johnson.
Welcome.
And then I turn it over to Julie to kind of talk a little bit more about this award.
Mayor, council. This Firewise program is a program of the National Fire Prevention Association, which includes a network of more than 1,500 recognized Firewise USA sites from across the nation taking action and ownership in preparing and protecting their homes against the threat of wildfire. Qualifying for the program involves communication, fuel reduction events, and other activities which have an in-kind value of at least $24.14 per resident. In 2018, the Australia Mountain Ranch community, in conjunction with the Fire Department, the Parks Department, and Australia prides, they did several things, including provided wildland fire information and welcome packets, sent community wildfire awareness through a variety of articles and direct mailing, participated in community events, including Winterfest and Extravaganza, and held a fuel reduction event on November 17, clearing 28 yards of excess fuels and debris from corugate wash. I should also mention that the Australia prides were a functional part of this as well. All total, the qualifying in-kind contribution for Australia Mountain Ranch Phase 1, which is that northwest corner, totaled over $8,485. On behalf of the city of Goodyear, congratulations on achieving this designation.
So we're going... Do you want the council up there? Before you go, could we do this? Sherri, would you give the proper thank you and the attention to this, to what they've done for the council? I appreciate it.
First of all, that's what we always say, is our residents are our strongest assets. And I want to thank you all for getting involved. This started... We had a fire up there, a house fire, right across from a wash. And as I watched, it was right across from the wash where I live. And as I watched the smoke and everything, and then you heard about the California fires, I said, "Chief, what can we do?" And the chief found the program, got everyone involved. Your department was wonderful, and I know it took them a lot of hard work because it was dealing with the federal government. So we all know that's a lot of loophole, a lot of holes to get through and everything, and they worked so hard to get this done. And I want to thank everybody that's helping on that. Our community is just wonderful, and as we build, continue to build up there, it's important to keep this going because we want a safe community. And you see a difference at that corugate wash as it... After the work was done, it is just amazing, and you know it's just a lot safer. Those beautiful rains we have always leave more for the next year. So it'll be an ongoing thing, and so I appreciate your work and thank you. And thank you, chief, and your department. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. So now we'll go ahead and do the picture.
Please.
Everybody to the left.
All right, ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Gailene Aslonski will introduce Bernadette Carroll, Director of the West Valley Arts Council, and will provide an update about this weekend's Lakeside Music Fest. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. City of Goodyear has had a partnership with West Valley Arts Council for well over 20 years. They have provided quality arts experiences in our city for our residents all this time, whether it's through public art programs, through programs that they bring classes to our city, bring artists to our city, and also through our special events. And we have one of those great events coming up this Saturday. With me tonight is Bernadette Carroll. She's the Director of the West Valley Arts Council, and she's going to share more with you about this fun and exciting event this weekend.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks. And we did coordinate our outfits. So thank you all for having me today. It's been a whirlwind the past year planning this event with the city of Goodyear and with Newland. This whole thing kind of came together because Lucero is opening in a few days. And so to back up a little bit, as Gailene said, for over 20, I think over 25 years actually, we have been doing events up at Newland at the lake. We did the Phoenix Symphony Pops for over 23 years. And then six years ago, they decided to change their schedule, and we had to scramble and come up with a new idea. And we developed this program together, and it was such a fan favorite, family-friendly, it was free, and we made it so that there were all different kinds of music that people could listen to and enjoy. And they're at the lake, and it's a beautiful setting for, you know, all kinds of music. So we developed this great festival, and like I said, this year's a little bit different because our headliner is Smash Mouth. And so we really have been diligently meeting once a month, planning this event because we want it to go off without a hitch. We want everybody to be safe because we expect larger crowds. So we're really working with all the departments that Gailene has connected us with, especially with Goodyear Fire Department and Police Department, to make sure that everybody's safe. We have Ollie the Trolley coming this year to ferry people from the local high schools to the venue. So, you know, it's a big lineup with Smash Mouth coming, but we're super excited. And with the opening of Lucero, Newland has really put a lot of money behind some advertisements on the radio, so we've gotten radio for the first time this year, and we'll have 93.3 on-site as well. So aspects of the festival this year that are a little bit different is we had to expand everything because we were expecting a lot more people. So we have more food trucks this year, more variety. We have a couple of vegan options. We expanded the kids' zone to have a lot more activities. We have Ignite Yoga coming. Phoenix Conservatory of Music is going to be doing a pet... What do they call it? An instrument petting zoo. Wham from Surprise, they're going to be doing some art activities. We have face painters, African drumming circles, and a Lego race car building, which all the little kids seem to love. Our VIP tent is bigger as well because we are actually, for the first time, selling tickets to the VIP tent. A lot of our sponsors got tickets in advance, but then we sold some as well to help make some additional money. And we're also hopefully going to make some money off of our beer and wine garden as well. But the lineup this year is a little bit different because instead of starting at noon, we're starting later in the season, and instead of starting at noon, we thought it would be smart to start at 4:00. So it's a little bit cooler. But we're kicking it off with Walt Richardson, who we've had before, but he's a Valley favorite, reggae guy, and he's going to be bringing some friends. We've got Rebel Heart, which is a country band, which I know you're going to miss seeing, Mayor. And we've got New Chums, which is an alternative group, and the Mike Eldred Trio, who just finished touring with Robert Cray, the Robert Cray Band, and then Smash Mouth. And we just felt that this band, out of all the ones that we reviewed, had that really good, high-energy kind of vibe that we wanted to bring, especially to the first, you know, first big Goodyear Lakeside Music Fest. Now, what does that say for the future? I'm not sure. I mean, is this something that you guys want to invest in? I'm seeing... Oh, that's what I'm hoping to. So we're hoping to kick it out of the park, and, you know, we hope that you will all join us in the VIP tent or at the event on April 27. Do you have any questions at all?
Oh, I'm sure they have some comments. Council, who'd like to make a comment? Yes, Sherri.
I am really excited. What was really funny is when I was talking about who was coming, my 14-year-old daughter knew who some of the bands were too. So it's something, when you say '90s pop', that's my age, you're too young to know that. And so, and she knew them from, you know, The Shrek and all the other songs that they sang. So I think you're going to get a great cross-section of residents and people from other cities. So I think we're going to approach that, you know, the McDowell Music Festival type of things, hopefully, is where we'll be heading with this.
Yeah.
Great job.
Thank you.
Joe?
Yeah, good job. I'm really looking forward to this. Actually, probably get there kind of early because I kind of recognize a lot of the bands that you have playing up there. And again, I know the effort that you put in to try to pull this together. So again, I suspect this is going to be a big, big event. So thank you for putting this on. I'm really looking forward to it.
I just worked with this while I was on the Arts and Culture Commission, and all the things we've done with you, Bernadette. You do things so well. You're such a professional, and this is going to be a very memorable event, and this is really going to put us on the map. And I just want to say thank you, and thank you to you, Gailene, for your hard work because I think you've really got your finger on the pulse of what's going, and it's going to be a great... Good for all of us.
I have to add to that. It's a true partnership. I honestly could not do it without Gailene's support and good ideas, and we're just a really good team, and Newland's been a huge help. So it's... It really is... It really is... It's going to be a great event because of everybody that put in all the time and effort to make it that way.
Well, I'll just say that you're... The tenacity is what you have, and you... I think back when I got on council in 2005, I think of all the moves you made, all the different events you brought in, and the different ownership, and you have been back and forth among all of the cities. And it was nice that you could settle on a place of business in Surprise to have that facility for your use. But it didn't stop you from making sure that all of our communities were fulfilled with these activities. So you got a great partner here with her in Goodyear, so we just thank you, Andy, for coming forth. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you all. See you Saturday.
Yeah, see you Saturday.
Absolutely. All right, 4.3. The staff will present a summary of the 2019 spring training season, and we have our ballpark general manager, Bruce Kessman, to present.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and council members. What an amazing season the 2019 spring training season has been, celebrating 10 years of baseball here in Goodyear. And that really started prior to the season when we kicked off with our first event with the Dinner on the Diamond. And of course, we continued that 10 theme all throughout the season with $10 opening day tickets, 10 Days of Giveaways, the 10-year celebration towards the end of the season. We also were able to introduce the new ballpark mascot, Ace, who is very well received by the community and our fans. That led to a slight increase over last year, about a 2% increase in attendance. We had a total of 166,460 attendees for spring training this year, and the same number of games that we did have last year as well. And overall, where that puts us in the Cactus League, it actually puts us just a little bit over Surprise this year. Just a couple hundred over them, but... But they also had one more game. I'll put that one in there too, so... Actually, it wasn't a couple hundred.
Well, you didn't have to tell that.
But they had one more game, so it's actually better for us. They had one more game than we did, so... But that's how we rank within the Cactus League this year. Overall, there was a few number of games this year in the Cactus League, but the average attendance was up overall across the valley. Of course, with higher attendance, we expect to have higher revenues this year. We had about a 3% increase in total gross revenues this year. Of course, you know, with tickets, concessions, novelties, you know, everything had a little bit of an increase. And I am proud to say that concessions this year did set, I guess, a record for them for highest grossing sales in the season. When that breaks down, and we're still going through the process now of reconciliation, but this is what the expected shares are going to be for each of the teams and then also ourselves. So everyone will be benefiting this year from spring training. But also, who's going to be benefiting is going to be our local nonprofits in our community that, you know, the Indians and the Reds do continually give back to our community in the tune of almost a little over $111,000 this year between the charity game for the Southwest Valley YMCA and the New Life Center, the Hope Team, the Benefisher, the Celebrity Golf Outing, and then the Roundup for Charity Program that's run through our team shop, Benefiting the Homeless Youth Connection. So it's fantastic that they continually support our community. And so this is the time of the year that we kind of really start looking at one of our programs, and here's some of our highlighted programs that we had throughout the year. We spend, you know, the next couple of months here evaluating these, looking how we can build upon them and start the preparation process for next year. We also take a look at our survey data each and every year, and we continue to receive the high marks, especially in the friendliness of staff. And again, after 10, 11 seasons, that I know we don't ever get tired of hearing how friendly our staff is and how welcoming that we are to, you know, every fan that comes to our ballpark. We always continue to look at how do we continue to drive and, you know, try to set the bar. One of these days, we're going to get a full five. And then, of course, we don't stop there. We went right into the offseason programming. Goodyear Little League's been playing games at the ballpark. This past weekend, we had the Hop and Hops, and Encompass Church also hosted their service at the ballpark yesterday. We have numerous other events coming up over here, lead us right into summer, high school graduations, and of course, the regional and national baseball tournaments. So never a dull time at the ballpark for us. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, council. Any comments? I think we've had a great season, fun things. Yes, Brandon?
Yeah, I think it's always great. I think spring training is an exciting time for the city. I really enjoy it. I think you can feel the excitement at the different restaurants and a lot more people in town, and I think it's just a great, a great event. And I think the 10-year anniversary, I think you guys did a staff, and you guys did a great job in making that special with all the different things that you did. And then, and it shows on the attendance as well, so I think we did a great, a great job, and I'm glad that we continue to utilize the ballpark like we've always, like we have. But it's just so... It's just a great venue to continue to hold more and more things there, and I'm excited to see what it'll be the next 10 years as well. So thank you so much.
Sherri?
I'm going to echo that. Thank you and your team because you just have so many great events from spring training to the one on Sunday, the Hops at Hops, which was a crack of watching them go after the eggs. So thank you all for your... You've done a great job, and you continue to grow it, so thank you.
Just extend my thanks and the council's thanks to the volunteers. When you see those stats of how they feel about our stadium, I hear people talk all the time about how friendly the staff is, how helpful, how they make it an enjoyable time for them. So that's meaningful. So I think you all agree with me, send that greeting out to them and how greatly we appreciate it. And thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, now it's a time for citizens who would like to address the City Council and any non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of the Goodyear City Council. Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor, we do.
Would you like to announce them?
John Bernard?
All right. The council will listen to your comments and may take any one of the following... The following. Respond to criticism. Request that staff investigate and report on the matter. And request the man be scheduled on a future agenda. And you're limited to three minutes. All these rules when you come up, I bet you'll have to be patient with me. The yellow light will let you know you have 20 seconds left to speak, and before you begin to speak, identify yourself clearly by stating your name for the record. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the members of the council and the staff of the city of Goodyear. My name is John Bernard. I'm a resident of Goodyear. I'd like to start off by saying thank you for your service to this wonderful city. I lived here, my family, my kids grew up here. We love this city. Thank you for everything you do for us. I'm here to talk about an opportunity to provide 100% free bachelor's degrees to residents of the city of Goodyear. This is an initiative that was started in Silicon Valley, and now it's spread to Sacramento, Paris, California, Gilroyd, Mountain View, Sunnyvale, California, and other cities in California. I've been tasked with the challenge of bringing this to Arizona, and I'm selfish. I want to start in my home city of Goodyear. So I am hopeful that I have the opportunity to present more information about this free college opportunity to every resident in the city of Goodyear. I would love to start with the employees of the city of Goodyear, but I thank you for the opportunity to come in and just present this information. I would love to leave some contact information and hopefully have a chance to follow up. Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming forth with such positive and good news. And yes, we would like you to leave your name and your contact number, and staff will contact you, all right? Thank you once again. So before you go, sit in your seat, be sure you give that information.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor, Ron Wilks.
And I think, Ron, you probably heard my direction for the first speaker. Yeah, thank you.
First thing I'd like to say is nobody here is wearing a hat. So if I'm not supposed to wear a hat, you're going to have to see my hair, and I'm not combed.
No, no, I will allow you to wear that hat. All right? It's quite becoming, not to worry. Just be sure you gave, give your name, okay?
Okay. Once again, my name is Ron Wilks, and I'm here today to chat with you for a moment or two regarding a very serious topic, and it is pickleball. And with all the things that go on in the city, and a lot of serious things, there is a game, we call it with a silly name, and it actually is a very serious game. And I'd just like to talk to you and give you a recap of the inaugural season of our courts. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council mayors, for the opportunity to chat with you a few moments. Once again, my name is Ron Wilks, and I'm one of the ambassadors of the United States Pickleball Association here in Goodyear. I'm a 13-year resident here in Goodyear. You can probably tell from the way I talk, I'm from upstate New York, so you'll have to kind of live with that. And I used to live in Poughkeepsie, New York, and yes, there really is a Poughkeepsie. I'd like to give you just a recap of the grand opening of our courts. First, so many people put down the government agencies, they're not doing what they're supposed to do, they're not listening. However, I am very, very proud of living here in Goodyear, that the city officials really do listen, and they do some very, very good work. An example of this is the amazing work of our recreation department, Nathan Torres, David Seed, Diana Ortiz. And I see here, which I did not know, that Nathan is here. And if I may indulge and ask Nathan to please just get up for a second, I would, or sit there, or just wave, or something like that, because for the good work of this gentleman and listening to us, we wouldn't have what we have here today. Back in December 2017, the recreation department listened to the pickleball community, and we had a dream of putting, bringing pickleball courts here to Goodyear. We met, and we did form a plan. And yes, in September '22, we had a grand opening. I know some of the council members were there, and Mayor, you were there as well. I'm here tonight simply to thank the mayor and the council members and the recreation department for making this happen. The game with a silly name is very unique. It brings folks together for exercise. It's a social outlet. It's fun. It's great for seniors and youngsters, and all citizens get together and play. I invite you to come down to our courts when we're playing and just stand there and close your eyes, and what you're going to hear is simply this, lots of people just laughing and having fun. And that's what it's all about with this game, and that's why I love it so much. The people at the courts play pretty much seven days a week. We have a very large crowd during the snowbird season, dwindles down in the summertime, and the group is growing. We even had some... If you can see it, some divine intervention.
A sister from the Catholic Church, yes.
And if I may indulge and ask Nathan to please just get up for a second, I, I would, or sit there, or just wave, or something like that, because for the good work of this gentleman and listening to us, we wouldn't have what we have here today. Back in December 2017, the Recreation Department listened to the pickleball community, and we had a dream of putting, bringing pickleball courts here to Goodyear. We met and we did form a plan. And yes, in September '22, we had a grand opening. I know some of the council members were there, and Mayor, you were there as well. I'm here tonight simply to thank the Mayor and the council members and the Recreation Department for making this happen. The game with a silly name is very unique. It brings folks together for exercise. It's a social outlet. It's fun. It's great for seniors and youngsters, and all citizens get together and play. I invite you to come down to our courts when we're playing and just stand there and close your eyes. And what you're going to hear is simply this, lots of people just laughing and having fun. And that's what it's all about with this game, and that's why what I, I love it so much. The people at the courts play pretty much seven days a week. We have a very large crowd during the snowbird season, dwindles down in the summertime. And the group is growing. We even had some, if you can see it, some divine intervention.
A sister from the Catholic Church, yes.
It's hysterical, I know.
Again, I want to thank the official, the city officials and the Mayor for listening to residents and bringing this wonderful amenity to the community. I also want to thank you for going forward with the planned courts, additional courts that we're going to have down the road. Last, as they say in pickleball, paddle up, pickle on. And if you're not familiar with the game, stay out of the kitchen. And if you don't know what that means, come on down to the courts and we'll show you what that means. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you. We'll go on then to the consent agenda. Is the approval, will the City Clerk please read Consent Agenda Item 6.1 through 6.6 by title only?
6.1, approval of minutes. 6.2, approve the fiscal year 2019 budget transfers. 6.3, accept an exclusive water meter and line easement from Essaro Estrella Parkway LLC and GKC II LLC. 6.4, appoint pro temp judges of the Municipal Court for fiscal year 2020. 6.5, approve Amendment 1 to the agreement for connection between the City of Goodyear wastewater treatment plant and Palaverty Nuclear Generating Station's reclaimed water supply system. Also approve a budget transfer in the amount of $121,200. 6.6, approve the issuance of an underground drainage easement for flood control purposes to the Flood Control District of Maricopa County.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, does anyone on the Council wish to move an item from the consent agenda? Then I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell, a second by Councilmember Stip. Roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pazillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you. Let's get on with business. I'd like to remind Council to wait till motion and a second before discussion. Item 7.1 is a public hearing to consider planned area development rezone of the Christopher Todd Communities at Canyon Trails. We're opening the public hearing, and here we go. Is Ava Cudaro Planner 3? Did I get it any close? Say it for us.
My name is Ava Cudaro.
Oh, Ava Cudaro.
And good evening, Mayor and Council.
Get close, I apologize for that.
No problem. And as noted, tonight we'll be discussing a Planned Area Development Amendment for the Christopher Todd Communities at Canyon Trails. The subject property is located at the southeast corner of Van Buren Street and 173rd Avenue. On the left, you'll see an aerial photo that depicts the current conditions, and on the right is a site plan of the proposed development. The request is to increase the height of the residences on the site. All other conditions would remain the same. The request is actually just on paper, and it arose due to a misunderstanding regarding how the city measures height. As you can see circled in red, that is the development standard, and it says 16-foot height for one-story residential structures. Now, while it seems clear when the submittal came in for site plan review, these were the elevations, and staff scaled them out, and they were measuring 18 feet to the top of the roof ridge. When we made the applicant aware of that, he stated, oh, he thought we measured the average between the roof ridge and the eve below, and some other cities do measure that way, and that's how he was coming up with a 16-foot height, but we were measuring to the top of the roof ridge coming out with about an 18-foot height. However, the elevations would not change, the style of the homes would not change, but the wording would need to change to match the elevations. So what is proposed is rather than a 16-foot maximum height, one story, the applicant is proposing a 20-foot maximum height, still one story, no other changes, elevation, style, everything remains the same. And when you scale out the residences, they actually come to about 18 feet, so it's doubtful they would even go to that maximum height of 20 feet. Again, elevations and all other standards remain the same. Neighborhood notification was sent to all neighbors within 500 feet. It was properly noticed in the newspaper and posted on the site, and no public comment has been received to date. This item also went before the Planning Commission on April 10th. There was no public in attendance, and therefore, no one spoke in opposition, and the Planning Commission recommended approval unanimously. So based on the minor nature of this request, its conformance with the general plan, that it will not adversely affect the surrounding area and the unanimous approval of the Planning Commission, it is recommended that the Town Council adopt Resolution Number 2019-1948 and adopt Ordinance Number 2019-1431, conditionally rezoning the land and allowing for the height revision. And that concludes my presentation, unless there are any questions at this time. Andy Jokums, the applicant, is also in attendance if there were any questions for him.
Would they like, would he like to present, or?
I don't believe, I asked if he would like to present, but I don't know if you had anything you'd like to say.
Madam Mayor, for your record, Andy Jokums with Buess Gilbert, representing Christopher Todd. I think the application kind of speaks for itself, so I'll leave it open for questions. We didn't do our job right, and we wrote the PED wrong, so we're here to correct it today. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Is anybody besides the applicant would like to speak in the audience? All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing. And will the City Clerk please read Resolution 2019-1948 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2019-1948, declaring as public records those certain documents filed with the City Clerk entitled Official Supplementary Zoning Map Number 19-02A, Rezone From Pad to Pad Amendment 19-210-00002. Christopher Todd Communities at Canyon Trails Legal Description, Pad Rezoning, and Christopher Todd Communities at Canyon Trails Final Pad Development Regulations, dated March 5, 2019.
Thank you. Is there a motion, a second, to adopt Resolution Number 2019-19-1948? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Over here. Excuse me.
I'll be second.
Was it? Okay, you.
I'll be second.
You're second, you, all right. I tell you, it came one sound from the two of you. So, okay, the motion was made by Vice Mayor Campbell, and the second was Councilman Loretano. Open for council discussion? Yes. Councilman Hampton?
This is more private question for Rebecca, but I know they said that per the agreement that it's like they're going to pay 25% of the light. At what point do we foresee there being a light up there at 173rd and Van Buren?
I can't answer when we will meet the warrants, but what I can tell you is we typically accept the in-lu payments either prior to the first building permit being issued or at a final plat. So we take the money and then we hold it until it's needed.
Yeah, okay. And then, it's a right-hand turn out of the top, middle of the development only? That makes sense? There's like a, I thought there was a right-hand only turn coming out of the development at, off of Van Buren?
I think we're going to get an answer here.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Bless you.
Yep. Thanks, Andy.
Any other questions? All right, well then, let's have a roll call on this, please. Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries. All right, will the City Clerk please read Ordinance 2019-1431 by title only?
Adopt Ordinance Number 2019-1431, conditionally rezoning approximately 22 acres of land located at the southeast corner of 173rd Avenue and Van Buren Street to amend the Christopher Todd Communities at Canyon Trails pad, amending the zoning map of the City of Goodyear, providing for non-embragement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Is there a motion, a second, to adopt Ordinance Number 2019-1431? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, a motion by Vice Mayor Campbell, and a second by Councilman Pazillo. Open for council discussion. No discussion, roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries. Great, let's go to 7.2, a request to adopt a resolution approving of an amended and restated development agreement for the Phoenix 10-11 project. Engineering Director Rebecca Zook presenting. Rebecca?
Thank you and good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I'm happy to be here this evening. I'm here requesting your approval for the amended and restated DA for the Microsoft property located south of MC85. On February 5th, I presented a development agreement for Microsoft that created an opportunity for an accelerated construction schedule. The vast majority of the requirements remain unchanged, but there are a few modifications or clarification captured in this agreement before you this evening. A few examples are: The title of a professional registrant was discussed in the initial agreement. We stated that all registrants are required to exti, I'm sorry, attend the Phoenix Self-Certification Training Program. However, we neglected to consider disciplines that would not be able to attend the training. An example would be professionals who put together the HVAC or mechanical or the electrical plans. In those cases, the professionals would simply follow the rules of self-certification and certify the plans, but not be required to attend the Phoenix class. There are other examples, but only those professionals that cannot take the training are allowed to fall into this category. Another change covers the possibility that there may be staff changes over the course of the project. The verbiage now allows for those changes to professional registrants and qualified professional registrants who prepare or self-certify, certify the plans. We also modified language that called for building inspectors to be on-site at all times, whether they were performing an inspection or not. We realized that this did not make sense, so we have added the term that ensure availability for the duration of the project with acceptable timeframes to both the city and the customer. The last two changes create processes for technical interpretations and deviations from the standards between the city and the customer. And the customer in this case includes the contractor, the architect, or the engineer. These types of allowances are dealt with under normal circumstances on any project, but we had not been accounted for with this particular development agreement. So the process and timeframes have been addressed in this amended and restated agreement. With that said, I'm requesting the approval of the amended and restated DA and resolution for the accelerated construction schedule for Microsoft. I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Then will the City Clerk please read Resolution 2019-1957 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2019-1957, approving the amended and restated development agreement for Microsoft, directing the City Manager to execute the development agreement for Microsoft, authorizing and directing actions, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Is there a motion, a second, to adopt Resolution 2019-1957? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Hampton, and a second by Councilman Cano. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pazillo?
Just for those that are watching this event, this has been kind of discussed as we kind of go through here. That's why you're probably not going to see a whole lot of questions, but in agreement with what you presented. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, let's do a roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries. All right, let's go to 7.3, the request to adopt a resolution approving the development agreement with Elwood Logistics Center. Rebecca's back on. Rebecca, you're on the board.
Hello again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. With this presentation, I'm requesting your approval of the development agreement for the Elwood Logistics Center. The agreement covers both non-required Elwood Road improvements and city support for a user-driven foreign trade zone for the site. I will speak about the roadway portion, and then Harry is here if you have any specific questions related to the user-driven FTC. I'd like to start by sharing with you a bit of history on this project. The site plan was approved on September 21st, 2018, which is seven months ago, but the project restarted over a year and a half ago. And when I say restarted, we've been working with this property over, on and off, for a number of years. However, with that said, we began discussions with the customer regarding the DA very early on in the 18-month process. The reason we do this is it's critical for staff to understand and justify the deal points that are being requested before we begin working with legal on an agreement, and certainly before we bring it before council for consideration. As it relates to this particular project, we had the owner submit two traffic studies specific to the idea of constructing offsite improvements. One of the TIA's was without the Elwood completed and to the east, and one was with. In order for engineering to support the waiver or reimbursement, it was vital that we ensure the developer did not need the completion of the road to develop. We were able to validate that the proposed development would be supported with the existing infrastructure to the north, to the west, and to the south. Keep in mind, separate from this agreement, and when the site develops, the owner will construct their half-street improvements along their frontage and pay for their proportionate share of the traffic signal at Elwood and Saraval. With that said, the developer will be making improvements to Elwood Road to the east of their property. The improvements will create an interim connection between Saraval and Estrella. The ultimate section will be a minor arterial with two lanes in each direction and a median. It also should be noted that the customer must complete the roadway improvements within 18 months of the effective date of this agreement, and the contractor's bid and selection must follow Title 34 of state statute to ensure transparency of the process. The offsite improvements will be adjacent to two other properties, Sundias Farms to the north and AZ or Arizona Galvanizing to the south. The Sundias Farms owner is aware of this DA and has a related stipulation in their zoning ordinance. They are aware of the obligation to pay for the improvements to their frontage, and thus, they will be involved in the design and construction as this project moves forward. Since AZ Galvanizing is already developed, the likelihood of reimbursement from that property is minimal. By way of this agreement and through the use of both reimbursements and waivers, the customer will be allowed to recoup his costs for the construction of the offsite roadway. This completes my presentation on the roadway improvements, and as I mentioned, Harry is here if you have any questions on the FTC. With that, I'm also available for questions specific to the roadway. And with that, I'm requesting approval of the development agreement for the Elwood Logistics Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Will the City Clerk please read Resolution 2019-1946 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2019-1946, conditionally approving the development agreement for Elwood Logistics Center, providing conditions of approval and an effective date of such approval, providing directions for execution of the development agreement for Elwood Logistics Center by the City Manager, providing directions regarding the record, recordation of the development agreement for Elwood Logistics Center, providing for an expiration, authorizing and directing new future actions, and providing for an effective date of the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a motion, a second, to adopt Resolution Number 2019-1946? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilmember Loretano, and a second by Councilman Hampton. Open for council discussion. Yes, Councilman Hampton?
Yeah, kind of the same as the last one. We've had previous talk, for the public's sake, who's watching this, we have been talking about this in the past, so it's not a surprise, but it's something that we wanted to look at and make sure the public knew about it. So, thank you.
Councilman Stip?
I think just generically, this is an exciting project for us. I think we got the pole between us, but I wanted to thank the representatives from the Elwood Logistics Center. Thank you for your diligence and your willingness to cooperate with us as we're moving through, and greatly appreciate you choosing to locate here, and we look forward to a long future together. forward to a long future together. Thank you.
Any other comments? Well, I go along with the rest of the comments, and definitely this needed to be done, and it's really nice to see that we were able to make all parties agree, and it will be built. So, thank you very much. So, council, roll a call vote, please. Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, we're on the information items. So, does council have any comments or reports to give to the public? Yes, Sheri?
Two things. First of all, I kinda mentioned earlier, the hops on hops was actually, it seemed like there was a ton of people out there, and that they did a great job at the ballpark for that, so, and the fire department dumped a bunch of eggs from the ladder truck, which was really cool, and then you watched all the little kids just go after them.
It was cool, yeah.
Yeah. Nathan said there were 33,000 eggs, so that's a lot of eggs. And then the other thing I did this week is I, John and I went on a helicopter tour as part of Amoah for the CAP, so we gotta, that was cool.
Yeah.
Gotta see where our water's gonna come from, where it's gonna connect with the CAP, and it was very interesting on how it all works. They gave us some handouts that I think John can forward to everybody, and they also offered, after we're done with the budget, maybe in the fall, come in and give us all an update, because it was very interesting.
I've been on that. It is terrific.
Yeah. They wanted you back, by the way.
Oh. Anything else? Yes, Councilman Stip?
Can we wait to the very end? It's about the next two weeks.
Sure. Any other? Brandon?
I attended the Wildflower School Award Ceremony that they had. They won a $3,000 check for include, proving their performance, and they beat out schools all across the nation. So, that was a pretty neat event to be a part of, and yeah, it was, it was really fun to be part of that.
It's quite an accomplishment.
Yeah, and then, I mean, you were probably there longer than me, but that kinda dovetails also into the building blocks to, for great schools that happen today. It was just a great opportunity for the schools and the city to come together, to work together, to continue our partnership and make sure that we're all working towards the same goals. So, I thought it was a great opportunity and something that we should definitely continue in the future. So, a lot of, a lot of things going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Councilman Cano?
I recently attended a sexual assault awareness roundtable sponsored by the Governor's Office on Youth, Faith, and Family, and it really highlighted the importance of even houses of faith recognizing that they may be first responders in many cases as people disclose things, also the importance of reporting and their different responsibilities. And it's just a reminder, and as we serve our communities, to make sure that we have our, our reporting strategies in place and informing everybody of their responsibility.
Excuse me, Vice Mayor?
You go ahead and talk.
I just wanted to be sure that I wasn't going to talk about something the mayor wanted to bring up.
I hate to talk all the time.
I know. All right, well, last week was very busy, but one of the highlights was the dedication of a beautiful memorial bench in honor of our former mayor, Bill Arnold. His wife, Joey, and members of his family were present, and they were so grateful that the city is recognizing Bill in that way, and the bench is beautiful, it's by a tree, they'll be sitting in the shade, and it was just a really special event, and I'm just so happy the city did that. I also attended the Assistance in Healthcare Board Meeting, and they're having their huge gala at the Wigwam Saturday night to raise funds for cancer patients who no longer work and are unable to make payments on childcare and food and whatever else, and they give cash grants to that. I also attended the Three Rivers Historical Society meeting, and they had a very interesting presentation. I almost forgot what it was. Was this when the SRP went? It was wonderful. It was on SRP, so we enjoyed that. But the highlight of my week was going to the Arizona Coalition on Military Families Seminar that they had, a two-day seminar, where I met so many people that are 501(c)(3), that give services to the military, active-duty veterans and families. And it was very interesting, and we were able to connect with, be connect with our library, because they have started, the library has started a veterans event once a month, and we'll be able to let them help them do whatever they need to do. And then, what else did I do? I have to read. Oh, I went to the Leadership West reunion. That's always fun. That's really pure social, so we did talk business there, but it was really wonderful. And then on Friday, Joe and the mayor and I and Brandon attended the Good Friday Breakfast at the Wigwam, and believe it or not, I was told there were 1,000 people there. They had it in the main ballroom and the smaller two ballrooms. So, it was an amazing event, and it was wonderful to see so many people out there from the West Alley.
Dynamic speaker, dynamic.
Awesome. Wonderful speaker, and that was my week. I think I did something else, but I don't remember.
Brandon wants to add something on.
I forgot. I also got a tour of Luke Air Force Base. I got to go into the flights, flight simulator, which was really fun, too. I lost. I got, I got shot down quite, quite a few times. I know I couldn't be a fighter pilot now, so, so that was good. And go see, go up in the tower and see their operations and just understand a little more about Luke and how we could protect it, and how it's just a great resource for the community. So, it was a great opportunity, and I enjoyed it, even though I got shot down quite often. So, thank you.
Well, we don't expect anything more than you at this point, you're nice. But it was a good lesson, wasn't it, how difficult it is? How difficult it is. Yes. I know he wanted to be last, so I was waiting. So, anybody else? All right, now you're on, Councilman Stip.
Okay, just, you may or may not know, the work that I do as a military contractor is working with our nation's Homeland Response Forces, which consists of service members from all branches, who are always ready to protect and serve our nation from natural and man-made disasters. Tomorrow, I depart for the final segment of my work this year, the delivery and execution of a national-level exercise that we've been planning for months. We'll train and assist in the evaluation of over 4,000 service members and three two-star command headquarters for the next few weeks. Serving both my country and my community has been a profound honor, and while it may appear to be a burden to some, it is not a responsibility that I take lightly. So, I would appreciate and ask for my fellow councilmembers' consideration and support when asked to excuse my absence on May 6th and May 13th, as phoning into those meetings is impossible during an exercise of this size and scope. Thank you, and I will return on May 20th.
Any other comments?
Is this questions for the city manager yet?
Yes, I'm going to turn it over after we're done. All right, so it's now the time for city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to report on our Hops and Hops event, our first annual. Here's the numbers. We had 5,735 in attendance for the inaugural Hops and Hops on Sunday, on Saturday, excuse me. It was a fun-filled event, and I wanted to share some of the other highlights. Goodyear Fire helped us drop 32,700 filled eggs. The Ultimate Egg Pit featured 41,000 plastic balls. The Arm and Egg Marbling Station, at least when I was there, was the longest line, but well worth the wait. That looked like that was a lot of fun. And we had live music and performances by Anderson Institute of Music. You probably noticed, we had a lot of innovative marketing strategies to help promote the event, which was a lot of fun. And we couldn't have done this event without Luke Air Force Base, who provided more than 100 volunteers, logging more than 600 hours between loading in the event and loading out. I wanted to recognize our sponsors, Baller Preparatory Academy, Palm Valley Pediatric Dentistry and Orthodontics, Sam's Club, Legacy Traditional Schools, and Grand Canyon Brewing and Distillery. A special thanks to our Park and Recreation Team, and Brenna in particular, because of course, this does take an army of folks to successfully pull off an event of this nature. But there's also work that happens behind the scenes. For example, our fleet team worked diligently to make sure the fire truck was going to be able to deliver those eggs appropriately. So, with all events, staff will evaluate the surveys and public feedback to make next year's event even better. One additional thing, if you happen to stop by, our Census Complete Count Committee hosted their very first event as part of the 2020 Census, and they had an event that included our Tom van, Topics on the Move. They had banners and information, and in order to build excitement, they had a contest using jelly beans, and the jelly beans represented how much, how many dollars are brought back to our local community and state. So, the correct number within the jar was 1,979, and we did have a winner who had guessed 2,000 jelly beans. So, they won the jelly beans and the jar. So, very successful first event for our Complete Count Committee, full of energy and excitement, and we'll be seeing more from them over the next year. Thank you.
That's nice to hear. All right, do you have any questions or follow-ups for the city manager? I didn't ask it. Yes, Sheri?
This kinda came up right before the meeting. We were talking a little bit about, I guess it came up, I didn't make the building blocks, but I guess some of the vaping questions came up. So, when we have a work session on that, can we discuss, maybe also add into the one we're gonna have about the locations, what our vaping policy is as opposed to the smoking policy, and what the ages are, and is that something we can change for sale of that stuff, or, and just kinda like, make it a little more, I guess, comprehensive?
Are you talking about vaping?
Vaping, yeah.
Yeah, we, you know, I brought this up, I don't know, year ago, two years ago, that I thought we should look at this and add it to our no-smoking. But I didn't get, I didn't get anybody going, yay, support, and that was early on. But I had researched it, and from the very beginning, there was no question, they were gonna use other sources in those vapors. But of course, PR sold them. And so, because I didn't get really enough support, that I thought we didn't bring it to council. But that's what we need to do. We need to bring this to council and have a discussion, and it needs to be done, and it's so simple, because we have a no-smoking in government buildings and in restaurants and in schools. So, I mean, it isn't difficult to add that on to this. So, I'm going to ask, as a mayor, somehow, that we get this put on. Sheri, I appreciate, and if another, if you wanna do three council people, fine, and I'll step back. So, if that, if that gives more power to the council, so if you wanna do that, then there's one, two, and three over here. But, you know, can I kinda revert back? Am I doing anything? I don't know. The lawyer's looking at me a little bit.
So, if I may, this is an item that we already had a council request to do a work session on, although it was more specific to zoning as compared to the concept of vaping overall. So, we certainly can expand that conversation. We are, we were trying to get the work session on before council break. That is becoming a challenge. I'm wondering if it might be possible to do a yellow paper with information surrounding those questions. What is vaping? What is the age? What is the current policy? And then come back after the break, or I'd like to get a sense of what the urgency is for council.
I personally think there's urgency. We're listening to the teachers and what's going on at schools. We're looking in the parks where the cartridges are dropped on the ground. You brought that up years ago, a couple of years ago.
I did.
Little kids are going and picking it up, thinking it's something they can put in their mouth or play with. So, I think it is urgent, and I just think there isn't much discussion to this. The information is out there. I think we could clean it up in one meeting. Go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem moving forward with the discussion, but I think it would be very, very helpful, would be having a yellow paper before we have our meeting, so we could get all the facts spelled out from the chief and some of the issues that are out there. So, we have them also going in to the discussion. We have some information in front of us as we start this discussion. I think that would be very helpful.
I don't think it'll be hard, because there's been article after article in newspapers and magazines and medical magazines, and it's at the doctor's office and dentist's office, and you read everywhere you go. Yes, go ahead, Bill.
Julie, are you, are you saying that staff is pressed for time, trying to get this done before we go on break?
Thank you, Councilmember Stip. Yes, we're, when we're looking at all of the development agreements and different projects that we have coming forward from staff and trying to get them to council before the break, creating the space to do the research and create an ordinance and bring a recommendation to council, we were just looking at the priorities of staff and how to make that happen. We had a potential hold for June, I think, 24th, but again, just in conversations with staff, trying to place the urgency of that compared to some of the other projects that we've been working on. I just wanted to engage in that conversation.
That I can understand, so.
Yeah, that's what I thought I heard. So, from my perspective, I agree with Councilman Pizzillo about getting some information, because some of us are not as well-read on the subject, and, you know, need some, I guess, more information behind the scene so we can be at least halfway informed when we come forward. I don't, part of that, I think, has to be where does this sit with the state preemption? So, I think there's a legal component of that and all the rest of this. I mean, they've just made it so hard for us to do the right thing, that if this gets in the way. So, just kind of understanding all of that before we go, before we go forward.
So, if I could recap, I believe what I'm hearing is a yellow paper might be helpful for those that aren't as well-versed on the topic, but we'll also aim within our staff abilities to get this on a council work session prior to your break.
And I can understand the work on staff, and I have to say, I understand that comments you're making, and I certainly don't want this to get in the way of something that we've been working on that has, has a timeframe that can't be met if this happens, so.
Yeah, okay.
Which one of you?
You can go.
Thank you. Julie, I would like to ask that when we have our discussion, I know our chief will be present, I'd like to hear from the SROs as well, or at least Sergeant Webster, because that is a, a big problem that chief brought up to us. They're even doing it in the middle schools now. It's, and it's filtering down, and it's just really critical that we really hear from the boots-on-the-ground people as well, so that we do make the right decision. Thank you.
Bren?
I, I think it's an issue. I just wanna make sure that we're not gonna not do a development agreement in place of it.
Oh, no, I agree with you.
So, for timing purposes, so if that means that we do it after the break, I still think it's an issue, or before the break. I just would like to also make sure we don't hold up a development agreement as well for timing of staff.
I'm saying uncle to that. You're absolutely right. City manager made a good statement there, so I have to go with that. Any other comment? Yes?
This is an important topic, and I think it has big implications. I'd rather take the time and do it right, do the research. In that way, when we come together, we can have a very productive conversation.
Thank you. All right, so does the manager have anything else to report tonight?
I do not, thank you, Mayor.
All right. The next meeting will be a work session on May 6th at 5:00 PM. This meeting will be followed by a special meeting. And then, May 13th is a regular meeting at 6:00, and May 20th is a work session at 5:00, and May 20th is a regular meeting at 6:00. No further business. This meeting is adjourned.